It being 6:30, I will call to order a meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education. It is Monday, September 13th. We are in the OSD Innovation Center at Oregon High School. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Bijak?
President.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Mary? Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Present.
Mr. Pankretz?
Present.
Ms. Fain again.
Present. Board does have a quorum. I do have proof of notice from Ms. Heights that this meeting has been properly noticed. So, thank you for that. Tonight on the agenda, we do have a consent calendar. We do have some donations that I'll read in a bit. We do have some information items. And then we do have two action items. 2021-2022 preliminary budget. And then we have a consideration of a WASB resolution regarding advanced programming. Then we do have some policy committee and other committee updates, including I've asked Ms. Jonah to give us an update on Policy 324, which we'll go over in a minute. And then we do have some information items. I do also want to make note that per Board Policy 566 and the Public Health Madison and Dane County Emergency Order dated August 17, 2021, all individuals who wish to attend the meeting must wear appropriate face coverings for the duration of the meeting. And we do have masks available if anybody needs that. All right, I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, next on the agenda is consent calendar. We do have some donations that I will read. $5,000 from One Community Bank for the scoreboard sponsorship for 2021. Oregon Masonic Lodge for $750 for the Oregon Masonic Scholarship. The Wisconsin Masonic Foundation for $750 for the Oregon Masonic Scholarship. And then $400 from Maryland Redman for use to purchase clothes for students in need. And then $1,000 from Audrey April, school supplies for elementary students in need. So, thank you to those organizations and individuals for those wonderful donations. We certainly appreciate it. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pankretz?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes, thanks. I have to abstain from the August 23rd meeting minutes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Ms. Fain again.
Yes. Consent calendar passes. And we'll make that note in the minutes for Mary's abstention from those meeting minutes. Moving on, B, information items. Next is public comment. Katie, do we have anyone registered for public comment? All right, is there anyone here for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to OEA report. Is there anyone here from the OEA to give a report tonight? All right, seeing none. And we also do not have a student here for the meeting tonight. So, we will work on that as we move forward for as a school year gets underway to have student presence here at the board meetings. So, now moving on to action items. We're going to switch the order. Andy is at another meeting and he's got to cover the budget. So, we're going to move up to consideration of WASB resolution proposal regarding advanced programming. So, I will turn that over to Dr. Bergstrom and Amy Miller, I'm sure, will join us as well.
Yes, Amy, I'd like to invite you up to talk about the resolution that you are proposing to the Oregon School Board, for the Oregon School Board to propose to WASB. And this is something that, of course, is near and dear to all of our hearts and something that Amy is a tireless advocate for throughout the state of Wisconsin. So, Amy, I'll turn it over to you.
So, thank you. I'm Amy Miller, and I am the Advanced Learning Coordinator for the district. And I was approached by our state-level organization, the Wisconsin Association for Talented and Gifted, so the organization that works with advanced learners. One of their subcommittees works on policy and works on advocacy. And one of the things that they have done is they have gone through the WASB, so the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Resolution Book. And they were looking for any key points in there that talked about advanced learning and making sure that all kids had access to advanced learning opportunities. And when they read through it, they found one resolution from 1992 that supports advanced placement classes, so high school-level classes. They also had one resolution that talked about funding. And there is state-level funding for advanced learning. And it actually did go up from about $200,000 to about $400,000 in this current biennial budget. But the thing that they didn't notice was anything that talked about giving kids opportunities to experience accelerated classes and advanced opportunities so all kids could reach their potential. So, they have crafted a resolution. How WASB works for this resolution book is a school district needs to approve the resolution. It is sent to the WASB. And in January, their delegation goes through these resolutions and kind of picks and chooses what they're going to add moving forward. So, the request is this evening that you would approve the resolution as it is stated. The WASB encourages districts to provide a variety of advanced programming opportunities for students K-12, including acceleration options, and to offer opportunities to individuals such that students from every background are able to achieve at their highest possible levels. Dr. Bergstrom, anything you'd like to add?
Well, first, I would like to thank you because, as I stated previously, you are an advocate for all students. And you do that not only locally, but you do that in a way that makes it possible for students across the state. And so, the fact that this is something that you have brought forward as something that's meaningful for learners throughout the state of Wisconsin, that carries a lot of weight with me. And I want to say thank you for doing so.
Thank you.
All right, we'll first start with any board members that have any questions. I know Anna was our WASB representative previously, and Troy is that representative this year. So, I'll start with you, Troy. You have any questions for Amy?
No questions. Just a big thank you for bringing this forward, and I fully support this resolution.
Thank you.
Anna, anything from you?
Yeah, just a quick, maybe clarification. So, there are already adopted resolutions that relate to this through the WASB book? Or would this be the first resolution related to advanced learning for the, that's supported by WASB?
This would be the first other than advanced placement courses, which are specifically high school-level courses.
Okay, so this is expanding that beyond a high school situation to encompass K through 12 learners?
Correct.
Okay, that's really my only question. Thank you.
Mary, anything from you?
No, I have the same question.
Okay. Heather? Tim?
I often wondered how those resolutions get to the annual meeting, and now I know. So, I appreciate the education. Thank you.
Amy, could you just share how many students are in our advanced learning program throughout the district and how long it's been in existence?
Well, I think one of the things that we want to talk about is we don't want an advanced learning program. We want an advanced learning scaffolding throughout the district pre-K through 12. It's identifying what students need at that moment in time and then finding a way creatively to make sure that they have access to that. So, it might be math acceleration. It might be reading enrichment. It might be creativity. It might be finding a be a champion mentor that connects a student with chemistry or with science or an area of passion. We want kids to find that spark. We want kids to be able to find that their school day allows them to learn things that they want to learn about, as well as things that are really important for them to learn about. It's bringing that ACP sooner. So, we could have numbers of math acceleration or reading. But the goal is that K through 12, all of the people here, we work together to find ways to make sure kids are appropriately challenged, whatever that looks like.
Great, thank you. I think that's a really important point. Go ahead, Tim.
So, again, that encompasses the Madison College environment, the UW-Madison environment, and environments that aren't traditionally educational environments. Might be a work experience. It might be something else during the school day. Okay.
Yeah, so not just high school, but really focusing on identifying learners where they are, starting in pre-K and kindergarten, to make sure that they are appropriately. Our goal is to challenge kids every day and to make sure that they're feeling that sweet spot of it's hard, I'm learning, and I'm learning resiliency, I'm learning problem-solving through my everyday experiences.
All right, any other questions? All right, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to recommend approval of the advanced learning resolution for submission to the WASB as printed in our board packet.
All right, Troy with the motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Mary with a second. Is there any additional questions or discussion? All right, Katie, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Pankretz?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison? Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Ms. Fain again?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Since Andy is not here, do we want to move on to the agenda and come back to the budget?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, we will do that. All right, so we will move on to D, discussion items. First on the agenda is committee reports, A, policy. Anna?
Thank you. Policy does have our next meeting scheduled for next Monday, September 20th. Some upcoming items that we have on our agenda include public records law, the school calendar for the 22-23 school year, if you can believe it, we're talking about that, or will be soon. And then coming down the pipeline from Visioning would be Decision Making Framework, Policy 175, and Portrait of a Graduate, Policy 41102. So, those are just some upcoming policy items that we will be covering. But before I turn it over, I guess I would like to have Gina take a moment to address a few things because there seem to be some questions in our community about student names and pronouns. And I just want Gina to be able to share some information about our district's legal requirements and our adherence to both Policy 157, the anti-harassment slash nondiscrimination policy, as well as our adherence to Policy 324, the establishment of and changing of student names. So, I'd like to turn it over to Gina.
So, I just wanted to give an update on where we are with Policy 324, which is regarding students' names and how we change student names. So, this policy, if you look at the language, applies to student records. And so, most of our student records are kept in Infinite Campus, which is our electronic database that many schools use. We do have some hard copies, but most of our records are in what we call Infinite Campus. And in Infinite Campus, there is a field for legal name, and then there's also a field for what is called nicknames, although they have been requested to change that to preferred name. And so, the policy applies to records. And so, we do not change a student's legal name in Infinite Campus without either a legal name change from a court or without parent permission. But we still always return, retain the legal name on record. And we need to do that because if the legal name is linked to the social security number, then we have to have a way to trace that for things like federal aid to college or Medicaid billing, or we also get quite a few military background checks when students want to join the military. And so, if it isn't legally changed, we have to be able to trace that. But I just want to be really clear that we do not change those legal names either in Infinite Campus without a court order or parent permission, or if a student has adult status and they are 18 and are independent. So, the question has come up, well, what about a student's name in class? And so, this is one area where I really feel proud of our district because we were a little bit ahead of protecting students' rights for our transitioning. So, in Wisconsin, it's long been the case that discrimination based on sexual orientation was illegal in Wisconsin, but not at the federal level. And there was some question about if that applied to students who were transitioning. And so, actually, our students came to the board several years ago, probably more than that now, and asked that we specifically include gender nonconformity in our Policy 157. And the board did vote to approve that. And shortly thereafter, there were a number of legal cases that followed that precedent. And so, the law has evolved pretty quickly in this area, I would say, in the last five years. And so, now, the direction that we are given, not only in board policy, but from the U.S. Supreme Court, the Seventh Circuit, which governs Wisconsin, as well as the Department of Education and President Biden's executive order, is that we cannot discriminate on the basis of gender identity. So, how does that relate to names and pronouns? So, what that means is that because we frequently ask students what they would like to be called, so for example, if my legal name is James, but I go by Jim, then teachers will call me Jim. Similarly, we have students who, let's say, my legal name is Henry, but my middle name is Lanny, and I go by Lanny. So, we call this student Lanny. So, because we do let children choose what they prefer to be called in class, similarly, if we have a student whose legal name may be Danielle, but now wants to go by Dan, we honor that as well. Not only because we're legally required to do so, but if you read the Whitaker case, which was a Kenosha School District Seventh Circuit case, the court there specifically said that if you don't honor a student's gender preference, that you can be emotionally harming the student and be liable for that. So, legally, we feel, and the courts have told us, that our best thing for students is to honor the student's name and pronoun in class that they prefer. But I just want to be really clear that under our policy and practice, we do not change that legal name. So, in terms of what does this mean for Policy 324? Well, I also want to share that we frequently review our policies. So, if you look at them, most of our policies will have an adopted date and then a revised date. But that doesn't mean we don't look at that policy. We're always looking at our policies to see if they need updating and what the right time is to update them. So, Policy 324 has been something that's been on our agenda for a while to update. I was hoping to have guidance from the Madison Metropolitan School District, where the parents have filed claims, and the court has given some preliminary guidance about how schools should handle students who are transitioning and their names and with families. And so, was really hoping to have that decision this summer. While we're not bound by that order technically because we're not a party, I think it'll be really helpful to see how Dane County is viewing. I did talk to their lawyers right before school started, and she, their outside counsel, shared that they don't expect a decision for many months. So, that is something that Anna and I have talked about as a policy committee, about when does it make the most sense to review that policy. We're really hoping to have some guidance, but we may not have that for quite a while. So, with that, I will pause because I know I just shared a lot of information.
What I will say is I will go around the room to see if people have questions for Gina. It's a clarifying question because it will be coming up for policy, and this is not a notice, discussion, or action item. So, please have it be a clarifying question to Gina, but we will not get in discussion or you will not share your opinion on changes to the policy at this time. That will be going to policy committee. So, I just want to make sure people are clear on that tonight. This is for clarifying questions of Gina. So, Tim, any questions?
With that in mind, I don't have any questions.
Heather?
I don't have any questions, but I think I just want to, I guess I want to clarify comments. So, just to be absolutely clear, we have not made any policy changes as it relates to this. I know we briefly discussed it for a quick second in policy last year, but there were no changes because we are waiting. We were waiting on May 14th to wait for the outcome of this case to help paper.
That's correct. And we talked about that at the policy committee meeting, that we were hoping for some more guidance from this case.
Anna?
No clarifying questions.
Mary?
No clarifying questions.
Troy?
Gina, could you just share any relevant details about the MMSD case that we're waiting for?
Sure. So, and I'm, and like I said, we're not a party to that case, and it's not a published decision. But my understanding is that in that case, the parents asked that the court stop Madison from using their guidance in providing support to transgender students in the sense that the school was, if parents were asking the question about what was happening with their children, that they had to answer that directly, that they could not, like, for example, if a student said, "I don't want my parents to know no matter what," that if the parent called, then the school district would have to disclose what was, that their student was transitioning. So, it was really the key part in the case was, and so, the court did issue a preliminary restraining order saying that the school district could not withhold that information from the parents if asked.
Okay, thank you, Gina. We will finish discussion items, then we will go back to action items. B, vision steering. Troy?
Yeah, so we met last week, I think it was. We had two agenda items, Portrait of a Graduate and the Decision Making Framework. Made significant progress on both of those items. Those are going to come back to us again next month. Our committee members have action items to do some work on the Portrait of a Graduate this month. So, those will come back next month. And then, just a heads up on a future topic that we're going to bring to Visioning is we're going to start talking about a facility study district-wide to kind of look at our district facilities with all of the changes that have been happening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Worth Woods. Tim?
So, we had a meeting this last Thursday. Steve Zock, Leslie, I, and Andy were all involved in that meeting, as well as...
Megan Conapackee.
Thank you. Megan Conapackee, I'm sorry, her name just slipped my mind for a moment. And just as an update, since we purchased the Worth Woods property and the Environmental Center property, some of our most urgent action was to make the property safe. So, if you recall, we took down a paintball field. We took down some trees that were in danger. We cleaned up the prairie out behind Forest Edge School to include some barns and some mink houses, et cetera. And so, that had all been done earlier this spring before it got buggy out there, frankly. And since then, we've had some other great progress. We did an application through the Wisconsin DNR to be recognized as a school forest, which is an important designation. That designation provides access to trees and seeds, to technical assistance, to school forest grants, and to some educational assistance. We're in the middle of that right now. We did a preliminary application. We had, they asked us for a couple of clarifying pieces of information. And so, we should hear something in the next few weeks, if not the next few months, on that school forest designation. We have been, had some brief conversations with a forester at the DNR, Nicholas Colts, who has helped us in a lot of different ways. One of those ways is he mentioned an opportunity to possibly have goats spend some time out at our school forest. Sounds odd, but goats actually get rid of the invasive species in a forest like ours. And so, that's just one of the insights that we can gather by becoming a Wisconsin-designated school forest. So, that's a big and important step. A couple of things that are coming up in the very near future, we are having, of course, there's the open house coming up at Forest Edge School. That open house is on September 28th. And a couple of us, at least two, maybe up to four of us, will be there to talk a little bit about the school forest. We may have some aerial photos of the forest and the Environmental Center as it sits today, and just provide a little bit of vision, a little bit of education as to what the school forest is. And so, Steve Zock and I are going to be part of that group, introducing people to the school forest and talking a little bit about the gem that we have. In addition to that, we talked about things like making sure that we establish at least one trail through the forest by this coming spring. There is actually a trail that's been used for many years by the family who we bought the property from. And this would be simply a formalizing that a little bit, making it accessible or providing some access that will allow accessibility through the property for those who need that assistance. We also talked about developing a staffing plan around a curricular focus. We talked about developing a Friends of the Worth Woods group. And we're actually going to kick that off at the FBS, at the Forest Edge Open House. We're going to kick that off by gathering information from people who have an interest in providing their time, their talent, or their treasure, frankly, to help us develop that forest. So, things are definitely moving along out at the forest. The last thing I just want to mention, we talked about it very briefly, is that obviously we're looking for appropriate funding for some of that. Most of that funding is going to come from outside resources. But certainly, we talked a little bit about the Alpine sale and how that may play a role in developing this property. And so, I don't want people to lose sight of that possibility as well. Does anybody have any questions about the school forest, the Worth Woods, or Environmental
Troy? Yeah, Tim, just a quick one. You mentioned trying to get a single trail through the forest. Have you talked much about our students with mobility impairments and how we might be able to accommodate them on the trail?
Yeah, we didn't talk, we, that topic actually was discussed in our meeting. We talked about, you know, whether a vehicle was something that we should be considering as we put together both a curricular focus as well as just public access. And so, that did come up. It is on our radar without question because, obviously, it's a forest. And there are some very challenging parts to it, and that's part of the adventure for many people. So, yes, that did come up. Just as a reminder to this access, this jump-off point that we spent some time talking about is going to happen somewhere out behind the school. So, we do have access from Highway MM where the Environmental Center is. That's one other point that we are working on, both through the city of Pittsburgh as well as the county, because we need to better understand what our requirements are for safety purposes and, you know, for lots of other reasons. That access off of MM, this particular early access, we hope to have coming off of the back of Forest Edge School. The last thing I want to mention is that it's important to remember that this isn't just about access for Forest Edge School. This is about access for our school district, all the schools, all the locations associated with our district and our communities. And so, first, we wanted to make sure it was safe. Then we want to provide some preliminary access. And next, we will have a strategic plan that will kind of provide a vision for what that looks like for the long term. And that Environmental Center, which provides us with the access off of MM, a more public access, will be an important element to that. Any questions? Any other questions?
Mary?
So, I think you just answered my question, but the trail is intended to go from Forest Edge to the Environmental Center. Does it also, you know, is it meandering as well, or is it just direct?
Yeah, it actually likely won't go directly to the Environmental Center, that preliminary access, because we've got lots to do around the Environmental Center. It will likely circulate through the forest itself, not lead to the Environmental Center. We really have a lot of work to do at the Environmental Center before it becomes more available to students. And so, it likely will purposely not go to the Environmental Center in the early stage.
Got it. And then, how long does it take to get the designation?
We're expecting it sometime in the next, I would say, four to eight weeks, probably closer to, hopefully closer to four, because we would like to start developing that once the greenery starts to come down and the bugs start to disappear. We would really like to at least get some preliminary formality to the trail that's already there yet this spring. And so, we're hoping to have that by sometime late in October.
Anna, go ahead.
Just two questions. The first would be, is the goal to be able to have all of our district students have access to that single path by the spring of '22? Is that our, is that our goal? Like, could a classroom say, "We want to go to the Forest Edge or the Worth Woods for a field trip and walk the path and have a picnic or something"? I mean, is that, is that the intent, that that's going to be available to all of our district students by the spring of '22?
It is preliminary access, not fully developed access.
Absolutely.
And so, that would come with, you know, being able to use parking lots we already have to bring a bus to those parking lots, as opposed to creating a parking lot.
Yep, yep, great.
To have a trail up, up the hill to the meadow where the start of that trail is.
Great.
All would happen from our Forest Edge property.
That's great to hear.
So, we wouldn't be creating new things for that preliminary access.
Right, but utilizing what we have in place, which is wonderful. That's great to hear. Wonderful. My other question, I guess, relates to the health of the woods. I know there was some concern regarding the invasives that you spoke... I know there was some concern regarding the invasives that you spoke of. Are we waiting for that school forest designation to then allow us to do things like bring goats in to eat the invasives? Or I guess, is that part of that? I just feel like we're up against a clock a little bit on the health of that woods and want to make sure that we're able to take action as soon as we need to, to keep that healthy.
Are we waiting for it? I wouldn't say we're waiting for it, but it is an important next step, because I think we can get access to some very important consultancy through the DNR, which is without additional cost at the moment. And they can introduce us to, you know, companies that do forestry management, that do invasive species or prairie development. They have a window to that world that we don't have today. And so it's an important next step. Waiting, fortunately, we're at a point in time where it's not very exciting to get into that forest this very moment, because it is really buggy and really tight, closed-in. They haven't done any forestry work in the forest at all, and they haven't done any, they've done very little invasive species mitigation. And so it's a very, it's a very tight forest right now, and I would rather get some preliminary consultancy before we jump into anything.
Okay.
And so we're not waiting, but it comes at a good time where we have the time to wait.
But it sounds like you are, that the committee has a sense of urgency relating to addressing that.
Oh, yes. Yes, yeah. That trail is an important element to our next steps.
Perfect. Thank you, no further.
Anything else, Tim?
That's it for me.
All right. That concludes D, discussion items. We'll now move back to C, action items. Number one, the 2021-2022 preliminary budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Highland.
Apologize for my tardiness. I was giving a tour to a bunch of engineers, and I actually got several claps. So encourages me to stay there, because they were talking my language. Yeah, I was absolutely basking in the...
Does that mean we have to clap tonight for this?
It wouldn't hurt. No, it was a good, they didn't stand or anything, but...
(laughter)
They're my kind of people. So, yeah, that was actually a lot of fun. So we're going to change gears and talk a little bit about budget, which is maybe not as exciting. So the budget process, I wanted to talk a little bit about that, because to some of you, this is probably on the newer side of things. So, and quite honestly, to some degree, it doesn't make a ton of sense how it's done. Kind of some changes that happened legally back in, legislatively actually, back in '93, 1993, kind of have turned things a little topsy-turvy. So I want to try to explain it as best I can for you guys. The first thing is, basically, this is anticipation for the annual meeting, which is always the fourth Monday in September for Oregon School District. We set that at that time, and the reason that we did that a number of years ago is so that we kind of have audited information. We kind of know where we ended the school year financially at the end of June. We don't have all the information for the next school year. We'll talk about that in a moment, but we have a good feel for it. We kind of have a general idea where we are. So that allows us to kind of talk a little bit about the annual, the budget at the annual meeting with that total amount of guesses, which would happen if we tried to do it in July. So we've kind of pushed it into September. We actually set the original budget, the budget that we actually live on, at the end of October. And the reason we do that is there's a couple pieces of information that aren't known until that time. Can I get the next slide? So the goal for tonight is to kind of just approve the preliminary budget. It's in the neighborhood of where we're going to end, thank you, but it's not at the final point. We'll still have the opportunity to change things as we get our couple of pieces of information, which I'll talk about here in a second. The big four, and I put an asterisk. Last year, if you saw the slide, it said the big three. We have a fourth this year. So we'll talk about the first three. One is state equalization aid. We do have a preliminary estimate that's required by state law for the Department of Public Instruction to give us on July 1st, and they have done that. It will change based on the audited information that we've submitted to the Department of Public Instruction, and they're calculating that. Plus, all the other 400 and, shoot, I used to know this number, 32 districts, I think, in the state of Wisconsin. They basically have a pot of money and they have to allocate it based on what everybody submits. So they're chasing school districts down, actually unfortunately, until probably October 1st, trying to get all that information, because some of the districts are very, very small and don't have a ton of staff. Enrollments, this is important. This is, when I talk about school finance, the, just like real estate, location, 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 it is student, student, students. There are a couple different types of students. They're all great, but we count them a little bit differently. Some of those students live in the school district, some of the students don't live in the school district. Some of the students that live in the school district go to other places and vice versa. So, and they all count a little bit differently financially for us. So we have to kind of work through that. I can tell you that Katie and I have kind of looked at things. We're a week and a half into the school year, and we're close to where our estimate is, which was about a growth of 50 students from last year. We think we might be a little bit on the low side of that 50 at this point in time, but we're still trying to chase, track everybody down, and our count date is not until this Friday. So, you know, things can still change, but we are working toward that. Assessed values, these are certified to us by October 1st of every year. The Department of, shoot, Revenue works on that every year, and we have some preliminary information related to what townships and villages and cities are doing, but school district boundaries don't mirror those things, and so they have to spend a little bit of time calculating what portion of Oregon School District is in the city of Pittsburgh, for instance. And so we'll get that information. I have a feel for it, and we've put that in this document for right now. Now, this is the fourth one, is the new one. If you recall, way back when, when we were starting the budget process, we had anticipated an increase per student spending of $100 per student. We got, as I've shared with you in the past several meetings, zero. We got zero this year and zero next year. So there was a gap, and then Governor Evers suggested in the paper that he would actually be filling that gap, at least for this year, with some money, some federal money that he has discretion over, and that's $100, $120 per pupil. So this budget is currently based on having that $120 per pupil. Unfortunately, since that information was shared in the paper, we have heard nothing. We have asked through our professional associations and everything else and have been told that we won't know anything until October. So at this point in time, that money is budgeted in this to kind of make the budget balanced, but there are all kinds of possibilities that could kind of create, turn this on our head a little bit. So we just have to wait and to find out more about that. So unspent funds is a large component of our budget this year. As we talked about assigning those funds this last year, the $2.5 million is the main component. And then we've talked every year about the other components to it. But why do we do that? Clergiers' long-term and thoughtful decision-making. A lot of what happens when you don't carry over or allow buildings to, not, to carry money over from fiscal year to fiscal year is the business office gets a lot more busy in May, because everybody's trying to kind of get everything they can out of their budget. So it really helps people kind of make more thoughtful decisions when they're, when they're looking at their budgets. Accountability, it does allow us to kind of keep track of what's going on a little bit better than having people spend money in May. That might go into a storage room or something like that, that is hard to identify what's going on with that. And then it's the thermometers of sorts, how the building's doing. How are they performing? Do they have enough money? Don't they have enough money? It kind of gives you a feel, based on the carryover amount from both departments and schools, how things are going. So the what, the schools, the departments, strategic planning, teacher compensation, so that's the amount of money that we put in place a few years ago with the teacher compensation referendum that's remaining for us to work with a certain population of teachers with. And then COVID is the $2.5 million. And now, the last thing that we talked about is we did assign that $148,000 that was remaining in the capital maintenance area, actually, the maintenance area. We did assign that to put it into the long-term capital trust account. I have not allocated that money into that trust yet, but that's the intent for us to do that in the near future. So this is my favorite sheet, as you've, that use that, have been with me for a few years. It kind of gives you a feel for what's going on in the total district budget with all the different funds. Now, the sheet's gotten pretty long, and so we kind of cut it in half this year, and we put the general fund with the special education fund, because they're kind of married to each other. Special education fund can't work without a transfer of funds from the general fund to get it to work. So the special education fund, the bottom fund there, Fund 27, has to have a zero budget, or zero ending balance, so that transfer is not decided until the end of the school year. So that, that $5,733,000 number that's there won't be decided until we know what the special education fund has spent and how much revenue that has brought in. So that usually happens, honestly, usually in July, after the fiscal year is done. But that $5.7 million number is our best guess at this point, based on all the calculations. The general fund above it, you know, we start with a fund balance that's unassigned of $11.248 million, and then we have all the different assignments that we've talked about kind of in the past, building carryover, Department of Carryover. We broke out Department of Instruction, simply because it was a fairly large department, so we showed that there. The teacher compensation carryover, and then the capital assigned for capital trust, and then the assigned fund balance for COVID is the $2.5 million, which is remaining. You can see that if we were to spend all of those assigned components, you would see that the fund balance would reduce by about $3.8 million on the right-hand side there. And the, and that's where that would end if it was all spent. It won't be all spent. Buildings will still have carryover, departments will still have carryover, but that's where it is. And then here's all the other funds in the district, and I will talk about those real briefly. Again, I should have shared, I will go into these funds a little bit more, or quite a bit more at the annual meeting, so I'm trying to spare you a little bit of me talking by just kind of covering this at a very high level. So, the special projects fund is a fund that basically is, uses student activity-type things in it. So anything from the basketball club to the GSA, to all those different clubs that are in there, Student Council are in there. We try to budget it at revenues to expenses, because it really doesn't matter too much to where it lands. It will be what it will be for those clubs and how they work themselves out. Non-referendum debt, that is an amount we know. Those are the bonds that we have to pay for non-referendum that's related to the Wisconsin retirement system. Debt service, those are the bonds to pay for the building that, the buildings that we're in, Forest Edge, for instance, and then all the additions that we did in 2014. Long-term capital trust, you'll see that we did start it last year with $100, and we got the clock moving, so to speak, but we probably should put some money into it if it's going to be a meaningful thing, so that's where the $145 that we've assigned so far would go. Referendum bonds, this is actually the remaining funds that are in, for Forest Edge. So we were still actually, believe it or not, paying Findorf some money even close in July, as well as we do have some projects outstanding related to our connection to the Madison Unified Fiber Network, and we have some monies that are remaining at that school. So we also are working on some security projects. If you recall, the referendum did have a component in there for security, and we are upgrading our PA systems at both Netherwood, Knoll, and Brooklyn with some funds. Food service, happy to report that we ended this last year at a positive balance. If you recall, a year ago, we were at a negative, or zero, actually. We actually had to have a transfer from the education fund to make it zero in food service, but it's rebounded well, and I anticipate it will continue to perform well, based on the federal program right now, where students are able to eat at all our schools. Employee trust funds is simply a sick leave conversion allocation for our staff. When they retire, they are able to put money aside for insurance purposes. We actually make that decision for them, based on a number of questions, or a couple questions that we ask them, based on a private letter ruling that we received about, shoot, probably almost 20 years ago now. And then the OPEP liability fund is for those people that have insurance for a few years after retirement. We set aside funds to be able to pay for that, and so that's what that $5 million is. And we have to put a little bit more money in there than we spend in order to allow ourselves to take a portion of those funds and get categorical reimbursement for special education purposes. Sounds like a weird rule, but that's how that works. And then the rest is community ed funds, and we break that down into the pool, community ed, and performing arts center. What's interesting about all of that is you'll see that we started the year with a $41,000 balance, and we are required by law to budget that balance so that we'd have a zero balance at the end of the year. So we have to, we basically are suppressing our levy by $41,000 for community ed purposes so that we get to a zero anticipated for the end of the year. And the last fund is a cooperative purchase fund. That is a zero, a net-zero fund. It is, we serve as an administrative agent for a number of school districts that Greg Granberg runs for, oh, shoot, I just lost the name of the fund. Yeah, Carl Perkins, Vocational Education, sorry. So that's my favorite. Two sheets, used to be one sheet, but normally it is one sheet. And so, again, this is at a very high level. We'll go through a lot more things at the annual meeting, but the intent here is if you feel comfortable at passing the preliminary budget, that we would put it in the paper this week to meet the guidelines, so that we can talk about this at the annual meeting in a little bit more depth. Again, this is not the final shot at the budget. This is just our preliminary budget. When we get those four different pieces of information, we'll have to make some adjustments, and then, and then at the end of October, we set the levy and approve the original budget. What questions do you have for me? Yeah.
Go ahead. Anna, you want to start?
Yeah. So just a quick question. You mentioned kind of one of the four items, Governor Evers', $120 per pupil allocation, and I guess I'm, if I do the math correctly, that equals about $460,000.
Correct.
In revenue.
Yep.
What's the plan if that's not going to come through?
That would be very difficult at this point in time with the budget. You know, a large percentage of our budget is staffing, and in this situation with the pandemic, we are, we would be hard-pressed in order to reduce staffing, to be honest with you. So I think the most obvious answer is we would use part of that $2.5 million, and that would be what we would do this year. And then we would have to strategically start thinking about what we're going to do next year, where we would have to reduce staffing or do something differently.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Tim.
So that $120 represents about, what, one and a half, less than one and a half percent, right?
Of the budget, yeah.
Of the budget. And this is more for educational purposes for me, more than anything. We are expecting next year to likely have, the CPI index, which that follows, I would imagine, is going to be significantly higher, and we aren't getting any money next year either. Not even 1.4 or 1.5 percent, as it stands today.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're thinking the way I think, long-term. Next year's budget is, especially if that, well, it doesn't matter if that money disappears this year or not, we got a tough, we got a hole to fill right before, before we even start spending another dollar.
Sure, okay.
So that's really the problem. Now, I will tell you that in this budget, we have budgeted some money from SER III. We have already spent the money from SER I and II last year. So there is some money in SER III. SER III's total for us is slightly over $1 million, but we are still being told all the ramifications and requirements related to spending money in SER III. It is, there are almost weekly webinars on how, what we have to do to do that. For instance, there is a community input component that has to happen. We've already allocated some of that money to things that were... We've already allocated some of that money to things that we're having to buy and to run school this year. But that is a part of it as well.
So those SIR $3 are in this budget?
Part of them, anything that we've identified so far, yes, that we have, that we'll need to spend the money on. So I'm trying to remember off the top of my head what those are. And off the top of my head, I'm not thinking of them, but I know that there are some things that are in there. There might be some furniture, that type of thing.
Tents.
Tents, yes.
Oh, yes, okay.
So there are some expenses already component. So we didn't budget the entire $1 million. We budgeted what we've identified kind of at the snapshot when we put this together.
Okay, and it's not like we can get that money and bank it and spread it over the next three years. It's money that we get and money we have to spend.
Right, I mean, it could be used over three years. I mean, it is, that's the timeline on it. But I got a feeling it's going to go faster than that.
Okay, all right. That's all I have for right now.
Yep.
Heather, go ahead.
Thanks for walking us through this. Andy, my question is built off of Anna's and Tim's. So can you give a little bit of maybe a summary of if other school districts in the state are feeling this same? I'm sure they're feeling the same thing on the Governor Evers thing and the state equalization aid for sure. But this is not unique to Oregon that we are having this budgeting without kind of knowing what's coming.
Correct.
And then problem this year, but bigger problem next year is also a common theme for school districts.
Absolutely. The one thing that may be a little difference, I was sharing this with somebody earlier today, is it really depends on your population of students. If you have more low-income students, your allocation in SIR is bigger. It's still one time in nature, but it's larger. So that gives you kind of a larger landing pad, so to speak. So Madison School District is 10 times our size. They're around 40,000 students. We get $1 million in SIR 3, they get $45 million in SIR 3. So if you get an idea of the, depending on where you fall, part of that is unique to us just simply because we don't have that many Title I students compared to Madison or some of the other school districts. So that's something to keep in mind. But still, it creates the same problem for them is what, how do they land the plane after that? And that's the part that the legislature just, quite honestly, doesn't seem to comprehend. What they will tell us, what they do tell us, is that they are willing to give us an increase for the next biennial.
This stands out as the equalized assessed valuation that we have, an increase of 7% this year, which means, you know, that's an eight, we're looking at an 8% reduction in our mill rate. And so in summary, we have, we're reducing our levy amount by $425,000. And then we, but we also have this $460,000 or $480,000 of uncertain, uncertain federal funding that's hanging out there. And that, I guess, I just pause on that because, like you said, I mean, or like Anna asked, what if that doesn't come through? What are our options? So I guess I'm posing the question, is there an option where we, we would levy somewhat, somewhat more than that $425 reduction that we're thinking about today? And could we use that for debt reduction or something this year that would somehow strategically set us up better for the next year? I mean, you know, the way I look at it, we can only control what we can control, right? We, as a district, we have, we have limited powers. We don't know what the state legislature is going to do, but we do, we do set the levy. So I'm just kind of raising that question. I guess I'd love to hear fellow board members' thoughts on that or your thoughts, Andy, on how feasible that would be, pros and cons.
Sure.
I mean, as a taxpayer, you know, I would love to see our mill rate go down. But as I look at the history of our mill rate, you know, we're looking at the most significant reduction in the mill rate in the past 12 years.
Right.
And at the last meeting, you talked a bit about the roller coaster effect. And I guess I'm searching for a way to maybe balance out the peaks and valleys on the roller coaster.
So we are limited what we can levy for most funds. The one, there are two funds that we are, have control over, more control over. One is the debt service fund. So if you were to decide perhaps to defees some debt, we could increase the levy in order to do that. Basically, defeasement basically is putting money aside, giving it to a third party and saying, you pay these payments at the time that they're due and they're off our books. And then the lights go out. So that, no, 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 that's totally fine. It's done all the time.
That's impressive.
So that's an option that we would have. The other one is community ed where we have the ability to levy more. There is no revenue limit, so to speak, on it. The advantage of defeating debt, though, compared to community ed is whatever we do with community ed probably is a program that's going to want to be live on. With defeating debt, you could grab some debt out there and pay it off essentially and increase the levy to do that. And then the next year, the levy could go down. Or you could do it again if you wanted to. Troy is correct, the levy is actually going down. The actual dollar amount of the levy is going down over $400,000. And it wouldn't surprise me if that number grows by the time we get to the annual meeting. Because again, this budget is predicated on growing of 50 students. I'm not sure we're going to hit that. That would reduce the levy as well. And the other component of it is I anticipate our actual state aid to go up a little slightly. Because we're negative tertiary, the state in July 1st didn't know how much money we spent. And so we didn't spend as much money as we had planned. And so because we're negative tertiary, our deduct for spending money would not be as great as they anticipated. And so we should get a little bit more state aid. I'm not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, but in the neighborhood of, you know, perhaps $50,000 to $70,000 or something of that nature. So we could end up with a levy actually dollar-wise going down by half a million dollars. And the reason for that is we're not growing much, as well as the state didn't give us any spending authority, but they did put money into state aid. And so that suppressed the levy, so to speak. So for instance, and I'm just throwing out a suggestion, if you wanted to defees $400,000 or $500,000 of debt that's out there that we have, you could do that. That then would, next year, when we're looking at the levy, you could consider having an override question or something of that nature, which would allow us to exceed the revenue limit to bring in more money. That would be something that you could consider. You would then be more proactive and in a position that you can see, wait and see what would happen with the legislature if they would actually give us the $450,000 to $600,000 increase like there seemed to hint that they would do. If they did that and you already went to an override and brought in additional dollars, you wouldn't have to levy all that money. You would have the ability to hold back some of that spending, that authority if you wanted to. But you would then be essentially strategically putting, putting us in a position where we have some known information rather than waiting and reacting to something based on how the legislature decided to act at that time. Does that make sense? I know that's, that could be confusing. The reason that defeasement is important is your levy could potentially go down. You know, it would stay up this year, it could go down. And then you could go to the constituents and say, we're going to keep the levy the same again this year. But you would give us, for instance, the ability to override by a half million dollars or something of that nature. And so you would basically be taking the roller coaster and it wouldn't be as exciting of a ride, which is what Andy's here for. It would just be level rather than going up and down. Does that make sense? I'm kind of a killjoy.
Okay, that was a lot to digest, so I want to give people a chance to stay on that point and ask questions. So Mary, I want to get to you first in case you have any questions on that. Because you haven't spoken yet, do you have any questions on that? Or we'll come back to you if you have other questions.
I can formulate a question.
Just yet? Okay, Anna.
Okay, and that was what, kind of what I was, the question I was asking a little bit was, okay, what options do we have? Is that an option? But from what I'm hearing in that description, we could set the levy higher, but we wouldn't necessarily free up dollars for education or staff. Or, you know, it sounds like that's going to be targeted at paying off some debt, which then may free up additional dollars in the future years, like long-term. You know, if we pay off the debt sooner, but it's not, I guess I don't know that that solves the problem given the restriction of how we can do that.
It does if you go to referendum. It sets you up so to go to referendum to keep that rather than doing this.
If we do the, if we allow ourselves to hold the levy.
Yep. It allows you to, I mean, you could do that regardless. You don't need to defees debt to go to referendum to exceed. It just puts you in a better position to continue to levy.
To hold it at a higher level and maintain that level of funding without increasing property taxes.
Correct, correct. I think, you know, some legislators might say that this is putting the power to the people to make the decision, right? And so some states require you to do overrides like every other year. Arizona comes to mind. It feels like that's kind of the signal that they're sending us.
I believe they said that was the signal they are sending. Okay, Anna, any other questions? Heather, clarifying question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. So given the action items tonight, is there anything that we need to discuss further in order to?
More information.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
It is preliminary. If you were interested in defeating debt, if that was something that was an interest and you don't have to vote, it's not on the agenda, I could bring, but just giving me a sense, I could bring somebody from PMA. You may remember, some of you, Michelle, who is our financial advisor. Michelle has gotten elevated. She does such a good job that she's taken a step up. I could get her if you want her, if you feel comfortable with her. But she has a new person who is kind of helping her. And he was actually the assistant superintendent in Madison. And his wife actually was a teacher of ours, Eric Cass. So he could come and talk us through that. He's been, we have kind of been talking on the side about different possibilities over time. And I showed him the new school this summer, and he said if we ever needed any help with this, he could come in.
I don't want to speak, but I think what I'm interested in is whether it's that or what are some of the strategic things that we can do within these very specific parameters that you're talking about that we can further evaluate? And that was what we tonight meant, but because, right, what if we get, even if we get the Governor Evers, that doesn't really solve the problem.
It pushes the problem off a year.
Standing on it, right? So I think it'd be nice to be thinking about this, how are we looking ahead, knowing next year is either going to be hard or really hard, right, budget-wise?
Correct.
And maybe it's because I'm not fully understanding all of this, but I would love to really focus on that.
In my, in my 21, 22 years in Wisconsin is in this position, this hasn't happened. And throw a pandemic in the middle of that, too.
Yes, I don't know if that was out of place for me to say that or not, but.
Tim?
So defeasement isn't necessarily going to take some of the carryover dollars and set it aside for debt acceleration.
No, what defeasement, what I'm talking about with that is your levy is going to go down 420, let's say 500,000 when we're all said and done. You could set your debt service levy, which right now is slated to be 2.5 million, or sorry, 6.5 million. And you could make that $6.75 million or something of that nature. You have the authority to set that. And then a normal, what are you going to spend the money on? Eric would come in and suggest certain bonds that we could basically defees. And what that involves is basically taking that money and sending it to a third party. That's all legal and everything. And they basically would pay those bonds at the time that they're due. So the bondholders are still going to get their money when they anticipated the money, just not from Oregon School District from this third payer. They're able to invest it into certain securities, but it's US treasuries, that type of thing. So it can't be lost. And then we can write them off on our books.
Okay. Obviously, one of the advantages we have is we are in a growing district. And lots of other districts are not. Most other districts are not. And so that really accentuates the challenge that's going to take place over the next two or three years for most districts.
Correct.
The budget takes into account these 50 additional students.
It does. I don't think we're going to get there this year.
And we haven't done any projections for next year on what we're going to, because we've obviously got a lot of growth ahead of us as well.
Yeah, Roffers would say, I think, somewhere a little north of 100 students or something like that in the 90s, maybe.
Okay, all right. There was one other question that I had. This option, as Heather describes it as one of our options, still requires, would require a referendum.
Yes.
It would. And because it doesn't by any stretch say, oh, if you do this, the money's going to be available for a period of time. It still says, if you do this, it still goes to a referendum, which still could fail.
Correct.
And so it isn't a solution, it's a potential solution right up until that referendum.
Correct. It still is helpful in that you've created a debt cliff someplace for your bonds. So if, you know, if you knew approximately when you were going to go to referendum for, you know, it can help with that.
Oh, sure, bridge the gap.
The new middle school.
Okay.
But it's not significant, I mean, it's not huge. It'll just be a little bit of help.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Troy, anything additional?
I guess I'm really interested in exploring this more. I'm just, I guess, wondering about timeframe. I mean, tonight, we're supposed to approve this preliminary budget. I mean, would you, would you want us to make a revision to this document tonight? Or?
Yeah.
I don't even know if it's an action item.
So it actually has to go into the paper tomorrow to get printed. In fact, it's already there, it's just waiting for us to say yes, because they had to have the space. So to meet our timelines and everything for the annual meeting, that's when it is. You know, in the past, at the annual meeting, I have, you know, shared that different things that have happened, that type of thing, if we wanted to. We could even be talking about a defeasement if we put it on the agenda for the annual meeting. We could have Eric come in and talk at the board meeting, or Michelle, either one. So I wouldn't adjust this document at all, simply because it just needs to go through as a process. Everybody understands the process that it's going to change again by the time we get to the end of October.
You've still got the big four and.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you.
Mary?
So let's say we do go to referendum. What's, would the implementation, assuming referendum is successful, be in time for next school year?
Yeah, we did this actually, I'm trying to think, if we did it for the teacher comp referendum, I think, where we basically passed two levies in October because the referendum wouldn't happen until the first Tuesday in November. So we passed two levies, one if the referendum passed and one if it didn't. And then that would help us for next, for the 2022, 23 school year. So you would have to, you know, staffing decisions would be kind of a question mark as we go through that because those are usually made in the spring, so that's a hard situation to think about. But for instance, other things that could be, could wait till that time, could wait till to be implemented then.
Any other questions? Yeah, I think we're entering a different era with the Oregon School District. You know, I think that when the state funding changes were made, this was part of the conversation that it was potentially not giving state aid and having communities fund schools by a decision for a referendum. So, you know, we're not saying we're doing that, but it is our responsibility as a school board to really look at all the options in the landscape that we are. in the landscape that we are given. And so I think we're doing our jobs by looking at that. So I would say that we would, I would recommend that we go ahead and approve this budget tonight, but have that conversation. And really, I think the annual meeting is a good place to do that. The community can hear directly the options that we're looking at, because we are in a little bit of a different landscape. And so there's nothing wrong with having those conversations, I guess, is, are my thoughts. You know, Dr. Bergstrom, would you like to share your thoughts? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
No, I think the questions have been, have been great ones. And they provided clarity to me, too, even though Andy and I have talked about this several times. But your questions were helpful. So I appreciate all of you giving it so much thought, because I think we have a couple of big decisions to make in the next few months.
Okay, with no more questions, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the preliminary budget as printed in the board packet.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pankrats? Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison? Dr. Lakuda? Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries six zero. And I think you did hear from the board that we would like that, that further counsel. So thank you very much, Andy. Yes, yes. Appreciate all the work on this. And you were quite entertaining tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, we are now moving to E, information items on the agenda. So that means it is time for Dr. Bergstrom to have the floor.
It is. Hello, everybody. And we're going to start off with our back together visual with the apple as the O and together. I have really enjoyed the visuals that Erica's put together to tell the story of how we're all coming back together in the fall of '21. And we know what our priorities are as we're coming back together. That's physical and mental wellness. And of course, all of our students experiencing high quality teaching and learning. So, oop, there we go. So you can see that, and you've heard, you've heard from me and you've heard from others, that the first couple of weeks back have been absolutely delightful. Not without their hiccups, but you can also see from the pictures as examples, there's, there's quite a bit of joy. There really is. People are happy to be back in school. The amount of bikes that are being ridden to RCI, you can take a look there at that. And we have to order another bike rack. We have so many bikes being ridden to school, which is another great thing related to physical and mental health. So what are our highlights from coming back together this fall? Of course, it's in-person instruction, right? That is every day, all day, and that's exactly what we want. And it's been a good experience. I also want to say a big thank you to our online coordinators who are working with our students and families who selected a fully online option this year. Our online coordinators, Jennifer Schmidt and Jessica Shrimp, have both been really wonderful and have been able to give our families a lot of individual attention and help them navigate what is very new to them, right? Because last year it was Oregon teachers and this year it is not. So they have received a lot of help from our two coordinators, and it's wonderful. I don't know if any of you have students, for example, at RCI, just one example. But oh my goodness, is traffic at RCI vastly improved. So we are having some really great across the district traffic patterns and drop off and pickup procedures. Our families are really doing a fantastic job of listening to the, the directions, following the maps that are given. It's making the process go much more smoothly perhaps than it has in the past. Our health and safety protocols are working, because you can see the very last bullet. There are currently no signs of transmission in schools. Remember, we didn't have signs of transmission in school last year either, because if you're using layered mitigation strategies, research has shown us that we can safely be in school. And we currently are. We're safely in school. And that feels pretty good. I also want to make the point, if you go back and look at the picture, that beautiful bus there, we have our drivers for all of our bus routes. And that is very different from districts throughout the state and Dan County. So of course, there are always things that we can continue to improve, but I have a huge amount of gratitude to our drivers and for our outgoing transportation director, Mark Fink, and our incoming Mike Carr, because we have drivers for all of our buses. And that's pretty extraordinary right now in the current labor market. As far as what's, what's new? Well, we have certainly discovered in the first two weeks that we have an increased need for contact tracing resources. We really had to increase our capacity. And part of that was because last year, our school nurses and our health office paraprofessionals, they didn't necessarily have students every day, all day in their health office. And some of the students were at home and never came into the school building. So now that we have all of our students save just a handful of families back in school every day, all day, their jobs, their plates are already extraordinarily full without not, not even thinking about all of the contact tracing that has to happen. Because it's not only for students who are symptomatic in school, but it's also tracing when people call their students into school and they mention COVID symptoms. Our nurses up until this point were calling all of those people in every school. And that was just a lot when they already had all of our students back and they had all of the medical needs that need to be filled. Consequently, Gina's done wonders and has hired two people to assist in the contact tracing process and, and the follow-up process for when students are missing school. So that has been a tremendous help, and we're finding it's still not quite enough. So we're working on being able to bring in more assistance, because it's simply, it isn't enough to keep on top of this the way we want to keep on top of it, because we feel it's a really important part of keeping our kids safely in school with minimal disruption. So we're also adapting due to some supply shortages. I think we've actually done really, really well. And, you know, there's food supply shortages that are causing menu changes. Andy was all over Wisconsin and Illinois trying to find tents for our band program, because up until very recently, last week even, we weren't allowed to play wind instruments indoors. Consequently, we were getting large tents at every school so our band students could continue to play. And then we've already discussed at length the fact that we don't have as many officials as we need. So we're adapting really well when you consider the shortages are out there and we're continuing to get great people and making the decisions that need to be made to keep things moving forward. You can see we're still seeking paraprofessionals, substitutes, food service workers, and certainly bus supervisors. Testing capacity at all of the schools is there. Due to orchards, we have testing equipment at all of our schools, where we could do a nasal swab for a rapid antigen, followed by a nasal swab for PCR. PCR test is sent out to Exact Sciences. Right now, this is only for students or staff who are symptomatic at school. And I think it's another strategy that we can use to ensure we're, we're keeping our schools transmission free. And then, as I stated, we now have the go-ahead from public health to play our wind instruments indoors, as long as there are appropriate bell covers. And all musicians are spaced six feet apart at all times. So you can see what our dashboard looks like right now. We've simplified it from last year, but we've also separated the numbers by school. The asterisk is when there is less than five or fewer students at that particular school. We didn't want to put in lower numbers for concerns about identifiable, or concerns about identity. But you can see we currently have eight positive cases, 37 since the school year started. And this is students and staff together. So that's the beginning of section, or that's the end of section, section one. And I will move into visioning and strategic planning. Everybody's seen our graphic. And when you take a look at it, I think you get to see that there's been a lot of progress made in the implementation of many of the things that we're going to, that we have as a part of our, our visioning and strategic planning framework. We are continuing to collect input. I'll give some examples of that for Portrait of a Graduate. And as was stated earlier in the report coming from the Vision Committee, is that we've had an opportunity to discuss that as a committee, to make some revisions, and we'll be returning yet again. And also making sure that we have more opportunities for input from staff and the community and students. They're a big part of that, too. So when you think about the strategic planning and all the work that's being done, I want to point out how important it is what's actually happening at the school levels. For example, based on the school board and administrative workshops that happened this spring, and then the administrative workshop this summer, it became very clear what general topics were the, around the strategic priorities. The principals then go back to their leadership teams. And that's when every year they are making adjustments to their theories of action. And here are examples of them. Brooklyn's Prairie View's, the high schools, the, the middle school did adjustments, as did really all of the schools who, who have them. And when you have an opportunity to read through all of them, you're able to see that there's a remarkable consistency. They might use the context of their building, but they're talking about the same things related to instructional strategies, emphasis on students' mental and physical wellness, developing a sense of belonging, all of the things that we believe that are connected, highly connected to our values. You see them reflected in the school's theories of action. And then everything that the schools do is tied back to this. Who do we want to be for our students? And how does that fit into the bigger picture of what type of district we want to be for our students? And now the buildings, based on the data and based on their theories of action, are putting together school-level goals that will be a component of the, the broader picture, the broader framework. So I might want to stop there for a moment. Or would you like me to move forward a little bit still?
Okay.
Ask questions at the end?
Got it?
I guess not.
Go right on.
I just have a quick one. Are those theories of action on each of the school's websites? Or where can that information be found if we wanted to read all of those for each school?
Well, first of all, I can always send them to you. You can see them in the high school. They're absolutely everywhere. So just walking around the schools, you would see it all over the place. But if you can't find it easily on the website, I'd be happy to send them out to make sure you have an opportunity to look at them.
Thank you.
Okay. Teaching and learning, exciting but brief. Okay, we know what our priorities are. And how are we spending the first few weeks of our school, school year? When we say that our priorities are physical and mental wellness, developing a sense of belonging for all students, we really mean that. The beginning part of the year, a good portion of our time is about getting to know each other, creating classroom communities, establishing norms and routines. It's all about going slow to go fast. Developing that sense where every child feels like this is the place they want to be. And when that feeling is deep and rooted, that's when you can really turn, turn on the high-quality learning, teaching and learning. And we are also, throughout this process, informally assessing, getting to know students and where they're at and what their needs might be. And then toward the end of the month is when we begin our, our assessment calendar, which is a window of time where we begin some of our more formal assessments. But we're really spending time on what we know is important, particularly for the students who haven't been to school in a formal way for a year and a half. And that is a really big thing when you are seven years old, right? So it takes a lot of time to ensure that you're creating the community within your classroom where the best learning can take root. Okay, so I think that would be the end of the teaching and learning and the visioning component. So now might be time for questions.
Does anybody have any questions for the three sections that Leslie presented just now? All right.
All righty then. We'll go on to the annual meeting update. Everybody knows that that's two weeks from tonight. And that's where we do the important business of setting the, setting the levy for the year. So we have an agenda. The agenda's been published. And there's a timeline related to all of that. I think you approved it last Tuesday, and it was published right afterwards. So we know that we have a very big event coming up two weeks from today. Summer semester report. We wanted to give you an opportunity to learn a little bit about how summer semester went. And to accomplish that, I'd like to invite the two summer school principals, Brad Ashmore and Jason Zerowick, up to give a brief update.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bergstrom. Appreciate it. Board, just want to thank you so much for your time tonight, giving us a few minutes to just report out on the 2021 summer semester. We had an absolutely fabulous summer this year with our teachers and with our students in the OSD. So first of all, I'm Brad Ashmore. I'm one of the associate principals at the high school. And this is, I believe this is my third summer, getting a chance and an opportunity to work with our students and staff during the summer. And it was, again, just a great, great experience. So I'll go through some of the slides. As you can see from the slide on the TV, we had a lot of great moments and good opportunities with our learners. Our beliefs and our goals of the summer semester are truly to increase engagement for our students, to continue connecting with our students and families each and every day, and to promote continuous growth. And this summer, we did all of those. We met, we met our goals and, and really had a blast working with those students. You can see the pictures up there. I believe one of the key pieces that makes our summer semester program so wonderful is the fact that our kids get to choose classes that they really want to take. And we've got so many great opportunities and options for our students within the course selections that they have. Also, just want to put a shout out to our teachers. After a really challenging and tough year, our teachers and OSD stepped up in a huge way to provide a number of courses and options for our students to be able to take this summer. While it wasn't necessarily always the same numbers, we know that we, we did a great job in promoting and providing a lot of different great classes and opportunities for our students. So on the next slide, if you could, Dr. Bergstrom, thank you. We wanted to give you a snapshot of some of the enrollment numbers that we've had. And what we thought would be a really good picture for you is to take a look at the last three years of our summer semester enrollment. And what you're looking at this slide is you're looking at students that enrolled in at least one course in summer semester. So in 2020, of course, is our COVID year. So you can see that number at the bottom. The totals are probably the, the area that my eyes go to first. In 2019, it said 2,662 students took at least one course. And then in 2021, we were a little bit less than 2019. However, I just want to make sure that you know that a lot of that had to do with the fact that we really wanted to be safe this summer as we were coming back and we capped class numbers. And we didn't expand some of those classes up, because we wanted to keep the physical distancing and make sure that our students were safe when they came into the building. So that had a little bit to do with some of those numbers. And then I know, Mr. Zerowick and myself, we worked pretty hard to continue. We know we have a need at the middle level to try to promote some more course offerings. And so we're working pretty hard at that five, six, and seven, eight to provide those options. You can see the work in seven and eight. We actually had student increase in enrollment. And that's good, just because sometimes at the middle level, students begin to have, you know, get scheduled and, and don't have a lot of interest sometimes in taking summer semester. So we're working on it, and we know we've got some areas there. And Jason will talk a little bit more on those. And then finally, before I do pass it over to Mr. Zerowick, I just want to go to the next slide where it talks about our course format and opportunities for our students. So we ran 61 courses in person, K through eight, this summer. We had 18 courses that we provided asynchronously or online. So in that, our teachers loaded up the Google Classroom or CSO. So in that, our teachers loaded up the Google Classroom or CSO, and then met with those students to provide feedback in those courses and classes. And then we did run two courses synchronously online. And then finally, we had 33 High School Credit Recovery, our first-time courses that we offered this summer, and it really does help our high school students to attain credit, recover credit as needed, and then also to advance credit with some of those first-time courses, too. So again, it was a really, it was a good summer, and we had a lot of fun, and I'll pass it over to Mr. Zerwick to talk about things that went well.
Thanks, Mr. Ashmore, and thanks, Board, for having us talk to you tonight. As far as what went well, I'm sure we can be here for quite a bit of time, but there's a few things that jump out. Having the ability to have our summer semester all here, for the most part, at the high school, has been transformational. We have our little ones coming into the high school, which is a great transition, to help out with some of those anxious moments when our students are transitioning. So we have a lot of kiddos who are starting out at summer semester in the high school at that pre-K4 level, and they're here all throughout summer school, or their years. And then as they transition, they get older, they've already been at the high school. So it's really helpful. It's helpful from a staffing and support standpoint to have everything here at the high school as well. The facilities here really lend itself kindly to what we're trying to offer with our students. It also, we have a great support staff that are working with and welcoming our students in. This year, we had two central doors that students could come in, whether they wanted breakfast, or if they're just coming into the building. It just made it really welcoming, especially for our families, who maybe it was the first time that they were having the learners come in for summer school. We always had a lot of greeters and a lot of staff members available to help guide, depending on if they're going to, going wherever they might have been going to. So that was really helpful to have everything out in, at the high school. The communication and collaboration between administration and our teaching staff, I think every year, we continue to try to see what was helpful, what needs to be improved. For an example, this year, it seems like every summer school or summer semester year, we have a fire alarm that goes off. Luckily, we didn't have one this year, but every year we do. So we made sure to put some of those emergency procedures where everyone goes, who's in what zone and whatnot, so that way, again, we have everyone on the same page as far as what they need. This year, we really divided up our summer school administrative duties, where Brad was working at the K4 level more, I was at the 5-8, and then Mr. Piam and Eddie was working at the high school level, 9-12. And then we had a couple other administrators helping out with the support of some of our students. So really making it communicative as far as who is your contact person, who you'd be going to. As Brad shared earlier, we really are trying to ignite love for passion and love for learning. So the course offerings that we are putting out there, we're trying to communicate with our staff well in advance. These are the high-interest areas that our students are gravitating towards. So we're seeing a lot of those proposals coming in, and this year, even though you saw in the last slide, our numbers at the 5, 6 might have been a little bit lower, and that was because of capping class sizes. However, the course offerings were higher for that 5, 6, 7, 8, more so than years past, which we want to continue to have that grow. Our registration process has always been very supportive of our families or for our families, but again, we're continuing to figure out what we, what our families need to prevent those barriers, whether it's a classroom teacher making a call to Brad or myself or Ms. Baguki to help get a family registered. We try to remove any of those barriers, so that way the kiddos can enjoy the summer semester. Again, like I highlighted earlier, more offerings at that 5-8 level, too. As we plan for the future, we want to continue helping improve and improving how we're communicating with our students.
For fall. Unfortunately, with the revenue cap, then that's applied times .4, so they count as .4 in the revenue limit. So, you know, it's pretty small.
Okay.
As far as an impact. But, you know, these types of numbers from an enrollment basis are fairly significant, and you can see that we've rebounded. So it will help us, but it does take, like you said, three years to kind of roll into the average.
And that was my other comment, is I'm just really pleased by the enrollment we saw for 2021, given the school year that we had and the challenges we all faced, and talking through, you know, some of the burnout I'm sure our teachers were experiencing and our students experiencing related to that year. And so what a great success story for our summer program. So thank you so much for this presentation. It was really helpful, and I appreciate the information.
Yeah, and just to reiterate one more time, as I stated before, like it wouldn't happen without our teachers. They're phenomenal, the fact that they stepped up and provided so many course opportunities for our students this year.
Yeah, that's amazing. I'm so, just very pleased. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Anna. Any other comment? Troy or Mary? Go ahead, Mary.
So I'm just curious, there were some asynchronous clap courses that were mentioned, I think, on the next slide. Is that something that's typically been done in the past, or was that in response to COVID? And do you see that continuing?
So we learned a ton. I'll just take it really quick. We learned a ton from 2020. You know, it wasn't a great year, obviously, but we, in the summertime, we really pretty much had to figure out how to do the work for the next year. And so we started then, and, you know, I don't know necessarily if that's going to be something that we'll continue to do in the summer, just because of counting minutes and funding and all that that happens. I don't know if that's going to be something that DPI is going to allow us to do. Andy, you could speak to that.
Yeah, so they let us do it last summer, but late in the summer, or sometime in the middle of summer, they decided not to let us do it for the summer. So we can continue to do it, it's just that we won't get any funding for it, unless it's for credit at the high school level. And there's still some rule-making thing going on with that, so.
Anything else? Troy?
Just a couple comments. I think, you know, summer school here is really a valuable asset to this community. Parents really appreciate it. But I did not know that Nancy is retiring, so wanted to give a shout out to her. She is a gem, and I see her at the pool in the mornings, and she's taking calls from families and trying to find classes for kids. And so she's done a wonderful job kind of connecting with the families in our community and to, on, you know, Heather's point, is really trying to find if something's filled or they didn't register on time. She works very hard to make sure that kids have chances to be involved in our summer school. So thank you, Nancy, for that. I think the other thing that is really a cool part of our summer school program, which both of my kids now have participated, is it's a first job for a lot of our students, is that we have a program that our kids can then work as assistants to our teachers. So I thank our teachers at summer school for taking that piece on. Not only are they running classes, but they're also teaching our high school kids their first job and how to connect. And that connection between older students and younger students is really a cool thing. And so if you have kids and they've not done that, it's a really great opportunity for our high school kids. So thank you, guys, for really spearheading this program. It's a wonderful thing. So thank you.
One last thing I'll say is Nancy's not retiring from the pool, so you'll still see her there.
Good, that's great to hear. Thank you, Jason and Brad. All right, superintendent's report.
Just a couple of fun things to update everyone on, and that is the Wisconsin Music Educators Association presented an award to two of our educators, Laura Burns, our OHS, one of our OHS orchestra teachers, and Nate Mendel, our PAC director, for the work they did to create the Make Music Oregon series that we all enjoyed last year. So that was a really lovely surprise, and they were, the judges said they were inspired by the resilience and creativity in our community during a most complex year. So yes, that's wonderful. So Ms. Burns and Mr. Mendel will be honored at the Wisconsin State Music Conference in Also wanted to bring up one more time, the grand opening that we have scheduled for Forest Edge Elementary School. It's the 28th with a brief ribbon cutting. Students are featured during this ribbon cutting, so it'll be mighty cute. 5:45 is the ribbon cutting, and then an open house that goes until 7:30. So they're self-guided tours, and there are many ways that we are letting our community know what's happening and inviting them to be a part of it. So definitely looking forward to that evening. And then finally, I don't have a slide on it, but I wanted to mention that the Oregon Wellness Coalition in general, and Deb Bossingham specifically, I owe a big thank you. We all owe a big thank you to them for the ceremony that they put on Saturday night to honor our first responders in remembrance of the tragic events of 9/11. It was really a meaningful event where they had speakers and the leaders of our first responders here in Oregon, a 21-gun salute. It was just, it meant a lot to everyone who attended. So many thanks to them for putting that on for the community. And I think that concludes the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. Thanks to Deb and Amy, they've done a wonderful job with the Wellness Coalition, and that's just another example that those women have put a lot of heart and soul into this community and done a really, a lot of good things. So thank you for mentioning that. And please, too, I know, we do have a lot more people watching school board meetings these days, so please do come to the Forest Edge ribbon cutting and open house. It's really an important new part of our district, and it is an amazing school, and I think you will really appreciate. And we want to thank you for your support of making that school happen. So please, community members, mark that on your calendar, and please attend that open house. And then Tim will be representing the board. I will be out of town, so Tim will be representing the board and saying a few comments that evening, too. So thank you for doing that, Tim, and maybe you didn't know that yet, but you will be asked. So hopefully, your calendar is free. All right, next on the agenda is our closing future agenda. As you know, in two weeks, we will have the annual meeting, so that will be our next meeting, and then we will move to checkout. So I will go around the room and see if anyone has anything for checkout. Tim?
Nothing for me.
Heather? Anna?
No, nothing.
Mary?
I just wanted to say thank you to Andy A. for speaking in terms that I can understand when it comes to budgeting and complex budgets like this, and also for kind of walking us through these very challenging budgetary times.
Thanks, Mary. Troy? Okay, nothing for me either. Okay, the board will now be moving in to closed session, consideration of adjourned closed session on item A1 as provided under Wisconsin statutes S-1985-1C. So we will potentially be moving back into reconvene and open session if we need to, but we will now move into closed session. So thank you, everybody.